It is seven o'clock, so we are going to call to order the March tenth twenty twenty five meeting of the Beacon City School District Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vicki, can you call the roll? Here. Delayed. Delayed. Here. Excused.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Matt, can you point out the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Um, next up, we have open to the public. Uh, does anyone have a public comment that they would like to make? Mark, please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Mark Fleischauer, I'm from the Rhinebeck School Board. I see that you have on your agenda that you're gonna be discussing Bosse's candidates later this evening. I am running for the Bosse's board, I'd just like to introduce myself. Um, I'm excited about the, the future for Bosse's. They have made great strides over the past few years, many new programs and the completion of their building project. I am in my ninth, nineteenth year of service, uh, board service in Rhinebeck. Uh, I've served as president and vice president of the Rhinebeck School Board, and been on the communications, facilities, finance, and policy committees over my nineteen years. I represent Rhinebeck at the Duchess County School Boards Association, and I have served as president and vice president of that organization. I'm a great believer in collaboration. Bosse's a prime example of collaborative service, and I believe the importance of programs for students who may not be college-bound. I feel there's a great need for cybersecurity in education, and I think that Bosse's can be a leader in that area. I work for Arch Care, which is the healthcare arm of the Arch Diocese of New York, um, and the IT department, so that's why I have an interest in cybersecurity. Um, and I'm involved with a number of, um, community groups in Rhinebeck. And finally, I'd like to ask that you consider nominating me for the Bosse's board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, we appreciate it. All right, anybody else? I don't see anyone, so we will move on to the workshop portion. Uh, we're starting with a facilities budget update from Jesse.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Jesse Morell, Director of Facilities for the Department. Um, I'll just get started with a, an update, um, on our CP twenty-one project, uh, where we stand on CP twenty-four, um, some staffing updates for the upcoming year, uh, some of our compliance challenges, and what, uh, conservation initiatives we have in store, and the, maybe implications for the upcoming budget. So, for our CP twenty-one project, what we're down to, um, is just basically some punch list items at most of our locations. Uh, we have new furniture arriving in Sargent and Rambout in April. Um, the sound booth here at the high school's, uh, gonna be installed beginning the week of May nineteenth. Um, and then the final grease interceptors to be installed, um, at Forestal over spring break. You know, that's everyone's favorite part of the project.
Interceptor's a cool word to use.
Yeah, it was trapped, I thought it was a little more exciting. Um, so what we have remaining in the CP twenty-one project will be taking place this summer. We have unit ventilators which are, are already under contract, uh, building management system as well. Um, boilers for Glennam are going out to bid, uh, currently. So, the hope is that, um, the entire heating system in Glennam and controls, the mechanical parts will be all new by the end of summer. CP twenty-four, the design for the high school, uh, chiller plant and heat plants complete. Um, the application to SEDs, um, in, in the process right now. Uh, the hope is that that can be installed, or it's expected to be, to begin in the fall of twenty-five. Some of the, the tariff situation is creating some uncertainty about supply chains, so that could be, that could throw a wrench in things, but that's where we're at right now. Um, we met with the working groups for the theater, athletic fields, and security entrances, and I think it was very productive. We have much, much better refined scope, um, the athletic fields are in design. Uh, since that meeting, we had a lighting engineer meet with the theater manager, and we came up with a big comprehensive project. Um, and that's going to, um, you know, we'll be able to get some estimates and see what we're able to do with that project. Um, we're getting preliminary designs for the security entrances, which we'll be, uh, going over with the building principals, and, and then, you know, to final design there, so it's moving along. Uh, because so much of CP twenty-one and, and upcoming CP twenty-four is mechanical, I just wanted to sort of acknowledge some of the benefits of these HVAC upgrades that we've already, um, done. You know, we see major improvements in temperature regulation, um, indoor air quality, uh, improved ventilation, and, you know, over the weekend, I'm sure we all heard about wildfires in Long Island. And, you know, over the last few years, we've had smoke events. And, you know, this new mechanical upgrades will make our buildings much, much better, do much better in those situations than they have in the past. So, uh, indoor air quali, our, our, at Rambout and at Forestal, we've basically replaced nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties technology. Uh, we have a much better understanding of the negative effects of poor indoor air quality than we did back then. Um, and, you know, the EPA can point to multiple studies that shows a correlation between improved attendance and improved work performance when you make improvements to the, to the HVAC system and, and improving to air quality. Prior to this upgrade, this is, this is Forestal, this is what the building management system looks like, uh, on the computer. The delta between the coldest room during the winter and the hottest room was regularly twenty degrees. So, one room was underheating and another one was overheating. Now, with what we've done already, every space in the building is within a degree or two of what it's set to, which is major for the people who, you know, were in there eight hours a day. Nope, did I miss one? Okay. Okay, some of our compliance stuff, it's, uh, the, the heat mandates are the first one I want to talk about. Um, that's gonna take effect s- the beginning of next school year. So, we have to look at it in, in terms, in short terms and in long terms. We know in, in CP twenty-four, we have a lot of AC planned. Uh, that'll solve the problem in the long term. Short term, um, we're gonna identify the spaces that are known to get particularly hot on high heat days, and have a plan to relocate students and staff temporarily to places that we know, whether they be lower in the building or have mechanical cooling, you know, to get through the day. Um, obviously, if it's so intense that the entire building exceeds the threshold, we'll have to come up with something, something different there. Um, I'm gonna jump to staff, uh, real quick here. We have several retirements taking place in the maintenance department in particular. Um, and with that's gonna go a lot of institutional knowledge. Um, and that's coinciding with these projects where we're getting more, uh, more mechanical systems and more complicated mechanical systems. So, our historical model is to have a maintenance worker that needs to have proficiency in carpentry and HVAC and electrical, and, you know, they do that. And the ones that do it really well have had an entire career to, to learn, and they're leaving. Um, so I think a better model would be to have more of a specialized, um, position. Like in, you know, we're, we're to the point where we have so much HVAC, and it's so computerized, and it's so technical, um, that we would benefit from someone with, you know, more expertise in that specific area. Um, so that's what we're gonna look at. We don't know exactly how we're gonna get there, might have to look at some different civil service titles. Uh, but, you know, looking at what we spend on outside contractors to bring in that expertise, um, it, it's, it's clear that we would benefit from having it on staff. Uh, next compliance issue. Uh, the, the Department of Agriculture has a program called Wildlife Service Program, and they address conflicts between humans and wildlife. And they come out, which they did in December, and they determined that our yeast situation over at the high school, um, warrants their, their service. Uh, so what they do, and it, it's no cost to the district if they determine that there's a need there. They'll, they'll come and train, they'll give some advice on how to manage the situation a little better to avoid any, you know, health risks or anything like that. Um, after I put this in this weekend, it occurred to me that that, I'm hoping it's not the case, but that could have been a, a casualty of some of the federal government cutbacks, but I'm hoping that's not the case. Um, but they were here in December, they thought we were a good candidate for their assistance, so we'll see where that goes. Um, we're taking advantage of a DEC program, um, that, to no cost to the district, helps with some of the hazardous material disposals that, you know, districts will generate, science chemicals, cleaning chemicals, things like that, that we can't throw out conventional ways. So, uh, solar, we talked about in the facilities committee exploring some, some different options. How can we integrate solar into, into the district? Um, I've met with a, a community solar developer, and I got a rough idea of what benefits we could get from signing up for that program. I asked Tetra Tech to give us some idea of what we could get utilizing our rooftop spaces and any ground spaces we have, how many kilowatts we could generate versus what we could do with the community solar, so we can really get a picture of, of what could work for us. Community solar is really signing paper, and they handle everything, you know, behind the scenes where. Um, but, but the return's limited, and we're not gonna see more than ten percent. But if we have the roof space and ground space, the potential could be for, for more savings, so we're, we'll, uh, we're gonna look into that.
How many of the roofs have we replaced? Because it would be only effective on roofs that are new.
Well, yeah, right, we, so that, that'd be part of the considerations. We wouldn't wanna do solar on a roof that's aged. We wouldn't wanna do it on a roof that's going to get, um,
My chair is like.
air conditioning infrastructure on it, right? Because that's the way, you know, in, in retrofitting these old buildings, there's no attics, so we have to do all this stuff from above, so that's gonna eat up even more of the potential roof space, so. So, given all of those things, this is just a snapshot of what we're proposing. Uh, equipment stays the same from previous years. Um, and slighting increase in, in contractual and in our salary line. Um, if you look at it as a percentage of the whole, again, salary is, is the largest bite, um, but it's, it's relatively close from previous years. Any questions, comments? Nope, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Matt and Anne Marie with another, um, update on the budget.
Okay, um, excuse me, tonight, uh, we wanted to just provide an update on where we are with our thinking, talk about the, uh, and talk about the levy, and talk about what goes into the levy, but also just some other things that are impacting our thinking right now, and also, uh, preview some of what we're gonna go over in the coming meetings. Um, we're just gonna do this reminder, a, a lot of our budget presentations just in terms of where, um, our revenue comes from, um, because kind of heading in to this budget season, we realized that there's a lot of, uh, misconceptions about this, especially, uh, as, um, as Jesse mentioned, there is more, um, reductions at the federal level. Um, federal, uh, the federal money only makes up about two percent, uh, of our budget. So, despite saying that, uh, we do have some, some concerns heading into this budget season and looking to the future. Um, so just to remind everyone, this year, last year, uh, we, uh, received just flat state aid, uh, so we did not receive an increase. This year, we're back, uh, along with every other district, uh, receiving a, an increase, um, with state aid. And so there's concern on our end, just in terms of like, how long is that going to be the case? Um, is, is this happening, um, because there's elections coming up? Or, you know, is this a long-term, uh, plan on behalf of the governor and the legislature? Uh, then also uncertainty at the federal level. So, uh, even if they are providing two percent, two percent, uh, of our budget, um, if there was a change in that, that would for sure be things that we would have to replace, you know, with our funds. So, the federal money, uh, goes to things like, uh, Title One, uh, reading teachers, it supports some of our special education. Those are things that we can't just say the feds aren't paying for it anymore, so we would have to replace that. Uh, it seems like most, um, prognosticators, if I'm using that word correctly, are, are not thinking that, that that will be a reduction this year, uh, but who knows? Uh, but, you know, federal funding could have impacted the state in other ways, in terms of reductions, and that by sort of a, a chain of events could, could impact what the state gives us at some point too. So, uh, even though this year is better than last year in terms of like the state aid, uh, you know, we, we just, like probably everybody else, we, um, have a little bit of trepidation going into this budget season just in terms of this, uh, uncertainty, both short term and long term. Um, so this was just something we also just wanna put, uh, in front of the board in terms of, um, what is currently in our reserves, and Anne Marie was gonna talk about that.
So, we, we never really talk about the money that we have in reserves in case, um, for, you know, for specific purposes or for a rainy day. Um, so we do have the capital reserve, we have talked about it, we are planning to use that in the, in the capital project in twenty twenty-four that was just passed in May. We have a small insurance reserve, um, we've used that in the past if we had some, um, things that were not covered by insurance, mainly at the high school with the HVAC work here. So, we're, we're really happy that that work is gonna get done, um, during twenty-five, twenty-six and through the capital project in twenty twenty-four. Um, so that'll make that money available for other things if needed. Tax O C R A reserve is, is probably the smallest it's ever been. It used to be much higher when we did a revaluation, probably more than ten years ago. Um, employee benefit accrued liability reserve, um, and the retirement reserves have to actually be used to offset either employees' retirement or teachers' retirement, there are specifics involved in that. And then I also want to mention the unappropriated fund balance. Um, we are a little bit bef- over four percent, um, which the state guidelines would like us to be. Um, but then again, that's always, um, available if we need it, but, you know, we're kind of within the state limits right now on what we should be.
Anne Marie, can I ask a question about that?
Oh, sure.
Is there, when you said that we had to use, um, certain, like, reserves, like the retirement, TRS, and the liability?
Yes.
Is there a percentage that you have to use from that, those reserves each year, or?
No, we have not, we have actually not used those, um, reserves. They, we can only reserve a certain portion based on, um, what our ERS bill is, or what our teachers' retirement.
So, you're not using them, that's amount you could put in there each year?
Correct, right. But we, we have not used any of the retirement contribution reserves or the employee benefit reserve. The tax O C R A reserve has to reflect the current tax O C R As that are outstanding and what we think they will settle for. So, there's very few of them, um, out there right now.
And do we have, uh, like, is employee benefit like the health insurance?
Yes.
That is that one?
And retire, it, it's not the full. And retire, it's not the full accrual of the retiree, but it's a portion of the health insurance.
And the tax reserve, how come that's lower? The $44,003, the tax?
The tax OCRI reserve is lower because you have to evaluate the current tax OCRI's. There aren't a lot out there. And then you, we historically reserve about 50% of what's outstanding. So they've been cleared. A lot of them, we've been working with our attorneys, a lot of them get dismissed and we never have to pay them. And then a lot of them settle, we usually do the reserve for 50% of what the person's asking for, and then when they settle, they're settling for a lot less.
And sorry, one last question.
Sure.
For the capital reserve, the $500,000, that limit is at 10 million?
Yeah. Yes.
And so we can still input 9.5 million in there?
Yes.
So with that one, it, just to remind folks, it has to, I think I'm correct with this, a public vote?
Yes.
To use it. So it had, like, it was part of the capital project vote last year to have it go into the capital project.
Okay.
So it could be something that we try to put some in every year if we're able?
Yes.
That we would use probably towards another capital project?
Right. Because we had talked about, you know, us going years without having a reduction in the debt, which I'm going to talk about in a second. So we may want, if we have the money available, to put it away for that.
And, but do we budget, is that part of our budget? Or is it like, if things come under budget, then there's extra that would go into reserve?
That's how, right, it's not part of the budget. It's not a line item in the budget.
So you could take some of the unappropriated fund balance and add to that, right? If you wanted to lower that
Yes.
To there?
You could, but there's a lot of restrictions on then using it. So if I, we transferred into capital, that has to be a board resolution and then it can be used for anything else.
Right.
I am going to talk about the tax cap calculation, but these are just a couple of things that go into the calculation that I wanted to just first talk about. The first is the tax-based growth factor. So the first calculation, you'll see in a minute, I have a slide how we calculated it, but you're allowed to grow your prior-year tax levy by this tax-based growth factor. And we've talked about it a lot because in Beacon, it's a very positive thing for us. It reflects new construction and not mere changes in assessed values. Beacon, in Dutchess County, Beacon has the highest tax-based growth factor, and it has in the last at least five years. So that's a positive for us. The allowable growth factor is kind of what people talk about, the 2%. So it's either the max of 2% or CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, that has definitely been way over 2%. So we're kind of stuck kind of at the 2% right now. A pension exclusion is a calculation, we had a small one last year, is if employees' retirement system or teachers' retirement system go above 2% increase a year. We do not have one this year. So the pension amounts, when we get into the budget process, a little bit more, the percentages are around the same, if not a little bit less going forward. And then again, the capital tax levy, so you're allowed to add back expenditures relating to your debt, your principal and interest, less the building aid that you're going to receive. And that's kind of an important part of this year's calculation, which I'll talk about a little bit more. So this is the actual calculation. It takes the prior-year levy, it adds the tax-based growth factor, it adds back a prior-year pilot, and then you see your allowable growth factor at 1.02, the 2%. You subtract what pilots you feel are coming, that are budgeted for next year, and then the capital exclusion. Now, if you remember, the capital exclusion has been around $900,000. So that's the local share the taxpayers will pay on the principal and interest. It is more this year because now the capital project of 2024, the debt will start coming in. So we're talking about going to the state, getting it approved, and we systematically have a local share. When we went out to vote, we told taxpayers that they, their taxes would go up a little to reflect the new capital project. So this part of it does have some debt involved. We work with our financial advisors to systematically raise the levy a little bit every year, not to do it all in one time. We will have a borrowing that will affect the HVAC work in '25, '26, so we did do some budgeting for principal and interest. That's why that number's a little bit higher. It gives us a maximum levy increase of $2.4 million, which is at a calculation of 5.15%. That is within the, that is the tax cap calculation, so it's not going above the cap. It's a simple majority at that amount, but it allows us to budget for the additional debt going forward over the next couple of years. Again, the impact of the capital project, the $49.9 million project was approved again by the voters in May of 2024. We did add an additional $550,000 worth of debt to represent the local share that we kind of talked about in May. And the increase allows the budget to include this additional principal and interest going forward. So right now, we are subject to have a bond anticipation note for some of the work. The capital project 2021, we're towards the end of that, so we're deciding whether to do a bond anticipation note or bonds. And that decision, we're going to make relatively quickly. We're not sure what the interest rate is going to be next year, so it might be better to do a bond anticipation note for one more year if we think the interest rates are going to go down. So we've been working again with our financial advisors to see what the best avenue would be for the district, so we can kind of minimize the interest expense. So I wanted to give you a quick calculation. I usually do this farther along in the budget process, but when we were talking about increasing the tax levy, I wanted to give people an idea of what that really means, like how much your taxes would go up. The assumptions at the bottom is I'm using assessment data from last year. I don't have the assessment data and I won't have it until the summer. And as we get into May, I'll talk about, you know, the whole budget process, but this includes the additional debt. This is like the whole, what the whole tax levy will cost the district. In, historically, we have seen the assessment information increase, and it's not just people's houses' assessments increasing, it's more properties coming on the tax roll. And we've seen that for well over five or six years. So what does that mean? That means that the tax levy stays the same, it can't go more because it's a cap, but it gets spread over a lot more people and properties. So I always look at this calculation to be worst-case scenario, because we're anticipating the assessments to go up again. There's more, we know that there's more properties that are coming on the tax roll, and we've even seen the tax rate per thousand decrease, and it has decreased for quite a long time. So I thought this was a good benchmark, just to see what this would mean for people, but knowing that this is the worst-case scenario and that we anticipate this to be less.
Just, I want to go back. So I just want to go back here, because we'll debrief tomorrow, like, I want to just open to the board, like, what information do you need about what we've just gone over? It doesn't have to be on this slide alone, that you'd like us to bring to the next meeting? I mean, you don't have to answer the question now, but it could be something that you email us, because we want to be as informative about this as we can. So like, the board's role in this, in April, is to adopt the entire budget. So that's the budget number, the levy rate, all of those things. Like, we have, for as long as I've been here, we've always done the budget at the tax cap, which is what this, you know, 5.15 is. A board could lower that if they wanted to, amongst, you know, other things, right? But like, I'm just, I just want to review the basics here. It is a higher number, the 5.15, than typical, you know, when we took the capital project out to the community last spring, we talked about it having a tax impact. We hadn't done a capital project with tax impact for, I think, 20 years in Beacon, so like, that does impact, you know, the levy. I think there's some basic things that we'll try to really work on communication around, like that number does not mean everyone's taxes are going up 5.15%. That just means that's the overall amount of taxes that can be raised across the community. That number varies. All the new building and construction in Beacon actually can bring it down for people. So like, we just want to, Anne Marie can get very specific and I speak in brushstrokes about this, but I do want to, you know, talk about this because that number is higher than normal. It's partly, it's partly because of, it's partly because of the capital project, it's also partly because of the tax-based growth factor. So, and again, you don't have to have questions now, but there could be information that you think helps you with this or whatever, so just let me know tonight or moving forward, because we want to really dig in with this, because I think communication will be key around this, because it will look different to people.
One of the things that I would like to see is with the capital exclusions, what it was, right, what it was now, and then what it will be, because we know it's going up because we went above the tax levy for the capital project 2024. But we also had the project at Duchess Boses, right?
Duchess Boses, yes, and I
So that's in there, too, right?
Right, so I have a, I have a future slide that I'm preparing for the next time that shows exactly what the principal and interest payments are. So it's our capital
Like, I mean, I could do the rough math based on what you said, the 990, and then it's the 1,400, right? We were at the 990. Is the whole half a million the increase?
That's a principal and interest payment that we're
Because Boses was in the 990?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Never mind.
And then we have to subtract all the aid that we get to. We also do bond anticipation notes for our buses, that's also included in there.
I mean, I understand the 5%. My only concern is, and again, I just don't know where other districts are, but you know, we always get into this comparing where others are at. And, you know, I believe most districts try to stay in that 2 area, you know, maybe 2.5, 3. It just, it just seems a little high at 5, but I know what we're trying to do and I understand everything, but it's just, just a thought to throw out there.
One thought I had, and we've done a little bit of this over the years, and I think we can try to find ways to do more, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, like, Beacon's actually a lower tax district than some of the districts you're referring to. Like, when we do the comparison of Duchess tax rates, we're trending on the lower side. I think we're in like the lower third
Yes.
of the group typically. So I think in terms of communication, we want to work on that part, because some other districts will say, well, we're keeping it around blank, you know, we're giving back to the taxpayers or what have you, but they're actually, their residents are probably paying more
Yeah.
than Beacon's on.
Percentages versus raw numbers.
Right.
The raw numbers in other places are higher.
So that's something that's like, we want to work on and get even more specific than what we've done in the past, because I think that's something that gets me, is like the communication around the levy amount, I think can be, I don't want to say deceiving, this is a little too sinister, but it can be confusing to people, and it's not the only thing that factors into how much a Beacon City School District resident pays.
Right.
You know, because, you know, there's a reason, I mean, we've been getting a lot more competitive, but there's a reason why, you know, when we do salary comps, or especially when we were doing them four or five years ago, we were always in the bottom quartile. It's because we, that's how much we were raising compared with the other Duchess districts. Like, we've gotten more competitive, we've gotten more in the middle, middle, even beyond middle with some groups, but like, sorry, but that's something I want to do a little more of, because I know, I know the way people talk about the number.
Right.
And I know we'll have to do a lot with that.
I mean, I, I would think if we could, I don't know if it's possible to, if we could get it below 5, I think I would be happier with that, just I think it would sell more. But I understand we have a lot of things, you know, the pre-K, and we have, we have a lot of things that others aren't offering, we understand that, but just, just to throw it out there.
Well, if it's, if it's 5%, but it's less than what a neighboring district household is paying, then it's the, it's just a perception thing, so you feel like
Right.
it would just be a better
Just because if, it could be a headline.
Right.
Right, Beacon's at 5 and so-and-so's at 1.9.
What was it last year?
Jeff understands everything we're talking. Hopefully he'll make sure that headline is a little bit more accurate.
It's been more than 2%. It's been on the high 3s at some point. It's not been 5 in quite a long time. And I think, I think Matt was correct, it's the two factors. It's the additional debt we're putting in capital exclusion, but the, the tax-based growth factor alone on the top gen, that difference is like $1.2 million right off the top. So that's pretty massive.
Which we knew it would be.
Yeah.
By the way, we've been trying
We knew that.
for a while. We knew that we were going to hit this wall at some point. And that's what we've been talking about. I also think the really important message, and it's too complicated to put into a soundbite, is that we have been paying for not really investing in our infrastructure for, like, you know, we haven't done projects where we've gotten ahead of things, they've always been reactive, and everything's always to keep that perception of lower taxes, but it's come as a cost, at a cost. It's come at the cost of like our buildings, and then it also comes out of our general fund in surprises, like during the year when suddenly it's like a heater breaks down, or we have mold, or we have something happen. We have like a whole laundry list of things that have gone wrong because of not really being proactive over a long span of time. And so we finally decided that we need to get ahead of it, so it's, we're paying this much now, but it's so that we don't have big surprises that take away from programming and things for kids down the road.
I agree with Eric, but like, I think like if, because the final budget isn't done yet, if it goes higher than what we're projecting, then we do it to offset the 5.15 and try and make it lower. So like, if they come up, like, we know we're getting to 2%. If they, if they say, hey, we're going to do 3% increase, right? And then we were basing it off the 2%, put that 1% towards that, so then it lowers it and it's not at the, at the max.
So the, so the levy, I, once the levy calculation is done, if we assume that the debt's going to stay in there, depending on state aid, won't matter on the levy side, how we could reduce the levy is not budget for the amount of debt we're talking about for the capital project in 2024.
Say that again?
So the $1.4 million would be the area that you would actually reduce, right? So we have a certain amount budgeted in there. We could, we could reduce that, and then if we reduce that, that exclusion gets reduced and the percentage gets reduced.
But we're reducing
But then it may get
Okay, later.
Into the future.
I, I think, I mean, I think it's really important to think about the way that our budgets are made and how important it is to use this budget to keep our budget growing, because, you know, we, we didn't get an increase last year. We are not guaranteed an increase next year in state aid. Our state aid has steadily gone down because of the growing wealth of Beacon, but if we don't use what we can with our levy, we fall behind very quickly, and that's what we've been making up for since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
You know, there was, the first budget that we, that I looked at when I was on the board, we did not go to the cap, and then the next thing you know, you're negotiating for a teacher's contract and there is no money. And I feel like we're barely competitive now with teacher salaries. We're constantly losing teachers to go to, you know, districts south of here that pay more, and I, and I very much feel for people that this hits hard, but I also feel like we have to think of, you know, how we're, what we're doing for our students and how we're, how we're keeping like a robust budget that we can do everything we want to for the students. And honestly, if you look at districts that have the same number of students, not in Dutchess County necessarily, but this is not a fat budget. You know, their, their budgets are over $100 million a year. And so I really feel like what we're giving the kids, we, we have to think about that and we have to think about the impact of trying to save a little bit now and what that would mean, you know, how that, how we lose over time with that.
Is the capital exclusion, is it the best estimate of, like, it's, you're almost, you and Jason, Jason's our financial advisor, like, you divide it into three parts? And it's, are they equal parts over the three years? I know, I know you can't totally project
Right, right now, they're three equal parts. So it's an estimate. You know, as we get further into the capital project, we'll know, you know, more about cost and how much the local share. This represents what we call the local share, so it's the principal and interest less getting back building aid that we get from the state. So that number can change. It's an, it's an estimate right now. We divided it over three to try to keep it flat going forward.
I think
So that's the only difference. You know, next year, maybe our tax-based growth factor won't be as high, and so then your percent at the bottom, your 5.15 will be less.
Well, I think it's also really important in our messaging is that the, you know, the public approved this project last year. They probably didn't understand that we then have to build it into the budget this year. So it may feel like they're paying twice, which is not what's happening. You know, this is the process, is you approve, you approve the idea, and then you have to build it into the budget. And so I just think it's really important that we, that we all understand that this is, you know, we hadn't done a And so I just think it's really important that we, that we all understand that this is, you know, we hadn't done a, a capital project with the tax, tax and kept, or impacted over twenty years. And, and so we aren't familiar, no one is familiar with this process. You know, this is brand new for, for this generation of Beaconites. And so I, I just feel like the messaging is really important, but I, I don't, I don't think that trying to save a little bit now, then we're, you know, we, we may have worse impact next year. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make, seem wise to me.
The, um, the other thing is that it's, the headline is that this project is going to provide cooling centers. I mean, this is, it's not even full air conditioning, it's cooling centers, but we hear about it every year. And I also think, I, I, I do wonder like it could be if it's written as a headline and it's like, it's going at five percent and people just, you know, five point one and people freak out and, but I also think it is based on like a generation of training, like what, what was the headline that we always led with? We always led with, we're coming in under the tax cap. We never explained what that meant as a choice and what we did here and how that impacted like what the things Meredith cited, like salaries, programming, everything. Like it came at a big cost. So it's like, this is actually an investment that will continue to build on itself, hopefully. I mean, Medicaid goes away, then who knows where we are, but.
Can, can I, so we can, I'm just a little confused with this. We can have the, so let's say our tax, the levy increase is five point one five, but we don't have to approve a budget that's at five point one five, right?
The budget will not be five point one five. The budget, the budget to budget, once we're completed with, it would be closer to two or three percent, if that. Because you have to realize in the budget part, because the levy's increasing, we also have to budget more for, for debt.
Correct. So-
That would be a key communication part.
Right, so, I mean, if, if just because our levy increase is five point one five, aren't people really only going to care about what the budget to budget increase is? So if it's only going to be two to three, then that sounds fine to me, right?
I think that's what we need to show.
That's what I'm, that's, yeah. I think I was just confused. That makes more sense to me then, okay, okay.
I think it's also if we just put a table-
I think that's what people will key, for sure.
But I think also we just need a table of the household tax rate for Cold Spring, for Beacon, for Wappingers. Like what each average household in those districts pays. That's all that matters because once you see those numbers, it's apples, oranges and quanquats, honestly.
Okay, I get it.
So, um, so we're, you know, we have a few more slides, but, uh, we have March twenty fourth, we have April seventh. Um, and then the adoption, the actual adoption is April twenty.
It's the second, it's the second meeting in April.
So, uh, the March twenty fourth and April seventh meeting, you know, March twenty fourth, Heather will do the PPS overview, but we're going to, uh, just to keep digging further with just overall budgeting information. Um, we're looking at what a few other districts do in terms of just like comprehensive, um, you know, budget information and trying to emulate that. Uh, we'll do the same on April seventh. April seventh is when Saggy will do like her, you know, the instructional budget with PD and things like that. Um, but, uh, but just despite, along with those presentations, we're just going to keep kind of getting into this. Like the, you know, just the overall factors going into the budget. Um, so, okay. Yeah, I think, you know, just to sum up, uh, we'll, we'll review this conversation, this part of the conversation and see what else we can do. But at, at minimum, communication is like supremely important with this because that number does have a way of just sort of lodging, uh, with people and they, and they may not see everything else. And so explaining that number, um, comparing us to other districts that were actually still on the lower tax side, um, you know. And also, uh, it's at the tax cap. And a lot of times, some people will just ask me, is this at the tax cap? And I'll say, yes, and they'll be like, okay, that, like that's sort of the, a thing in New York where it's like you're, you're under this or under or at this threshold, um, which obviously this still is. Um, so, uh, okay. And then this part, maybe what we can do with this part is also compare it over years too. Cause it's, I don't recall last year, but it's probably a little bit more because of the capital project.
We have, we have, you know, historical data we can put into it.
Uh, so just, you know, forgive, these slides are not great looking and we, I didn't have time, uh, to do that, but we just wanted to provide just some data. Um, these are the numbers of students per grade. Not going to say a lot about this. You see that dip in fourth and fifth grade and I think, you know, that's probably very pandemic related, uh, in terms of people choosing different options. Cause those kids were around K and one, uh, during that time. And then just, uh, our overall staff, uh, we can't do this with every single, or we, not that we can't. Uh, we're working on doing it year by year with teachers and then looking at some of the other areas just in terms of how staffing has changed, uh, for our different areas over like the last four or five years. Um, we do have a larger number of, uh, teachers retiring this year. Uh, Jesse talked about retirements in his group, but this is just about teachers. Um, and, um, there's, there's one position that doesn't need to be replaced in the budget, but that's just like a, you know, we call it breakage, but it's a, it's a savings within, um, that's a little bit higher than, than a normal year for us. I've got some feedback on this slide that I didn't even, you know, come close to covering all the things, uh, but these are some things, um, budget wise. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background, uh, on some of these. It's not complete, um, at all, but we could also add extracurriculars, uh, to this. We could add the fourth grade instrumental, which we started, um, years prior as well. And so we'll add that to a future presentation, probably on the twenty fourth. Um, but the classifieds reduction at the elementary level, um, we started in, in my year two. Um, what we were looking at at the time was our elementary classes were larger than a lot of our secondary classes. Um, and they were all kind of, at least the average was, uh, around twenty, twenty one. Um, and so this year, these, this is our average year. I know average is not, you know, always the best, um, thing. South Avenue is, is, uh, below the other three schools. Um, so what we intend to do with elementary staffing is at minimum, uh, just use the teachers we have to best sort of deploy to the four schools next year. Um, and that may mean there's some movement between schools. I'm not saying that in any sort of dramatic way, um, but, uh, we would work towards keeping these class sizes the same. Uh, the size of our school, elementary schools, they're all on the smaller side. Glennon's our biggest one, at close to four hundred. Uh, but the small size of JPS, Sargent and South, uh, it makes it harder to do a lot of tweaking with class size because, you know, you take a teacher out of a grade level and if there's two at the grade level, you know, and it goes to one, there's not much you can do there. Cause the class up to like thirty something. And so, uh, larger elementary schools, you can play around with class sizes a little bit more. But this is something that's been a huge focus of ours for years. Um, and we've probably over the years added about, um, seven or eight teachers to this. Um, so that's just that number. Uh, another initiative that began a few years ago is the nine period day at the high school. Uh, that year that we started, we added a full-time teacher to it. Um, and then, um, this year currently we have two point five FTE in extra classes. Um, that's when a teacher teaches a sixth class. I have that list separately and I'll email that to the board of like the teachers and what they're teaching. Um, I'll, I'll do that in the morning. Um, but that was an initiative, uh, with obviously some extra costs. Uh, pre K, of course, uh, I did the math on this one and I realized I made a mistake. So I'm going to change the slide, uh, later to, but the district contribution should be one thousand more. I'm doing my math right. But, uh, the total cost of what we did this year, we served a hundred and ten students. We served every student that applied.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, the numbers of students in the schools is more based on our ability to put a pre K, an extra pre K class in the building. So, so some of the kids in the Glennon program may be from another school, if that makes sense. Like pre K is not exclusive to like the school you, zone you live in. Uh, but, you know, you, you all mentioned during the tax levy conversation that, uh, we are, uh, I, I do think Poughkeepsie does a little bit with full day, um, but we for sure are the only district doing, uh, full day exclusively for pre K, um, internally in our buildings. Um, and there is a cost of that and it's there too. So with these costs of these things, um, I, I'm not putting it there as like a, we're going to, you know, move numbers around a ton. Uh, I'll be making clear recommendations in the next two board meetings about where we want to go, uh, with this budget. But I want to be clear about we are, that is, is not just state money paying for what we're doing with pre K. Um, so then, uh, I wanted to talk about some potential focus areas that we're working on currently that we'll be bringing to the next two meetings. Um, and it's a lot. And so I, one of the things is expanded opportunities that round out with a potential nine period day. Um, the total cost of that we're looking at would probably be about four FTE. It may not be four straight teachers. It could be some teachers teaching extra classes. Um, a model that we're looking at would be an additional health class in sixth grade. Cause currently those kids just get help in eighth. Um, because I mentioned this in a prior meeting, the kids receiving A I S miss electives. So because those kids would be back getting all their electives, we would most likely have to hire another technology teacher, um, because those numbers would be up. Um, we would also, uh, be looking at adding a study sales class to sixth grade. Um, and, and then we would need to be adding an elective to seventh grade, which would be to be determined, uh, which would be one of those FTEs. And then, uh, we would want to add a few, um, smaller electives to eighth grade that wouldn't serve all students, but some, like art electives. Uh, that said, that's just one of the things we're looking at doing. Uh, so when I get to the end of this slide, I'll talk about some thoughts about moving forward. We also want to increase intervention teachers at the elementary level. Um, we're looking at anywhere from one to three. Uh, we currently have now three math intervention teachers. We obviously have four elementary schools, so we're looking to add a fourth, uh, math intervention teacher. And then we're also looking at a model of adding two reading intervention teachers that would be split, uh, between schools on top of the one we have in each building. Um, our professional development is, probably will be a little bit higher this year, uh, really focused on teaching of reading and also the expansion of H M H and the Grace K through two. Saggy will get into this detail on the April seventh meeting, um, but I'm just sort of foreshadowing this. So this is a lot, uh, just to be real, we probably cannot afford all of this. So a couple of meetings ago, I talked about, uh, like clear, more focused strategic planning. Uh, so one of the things that I want to do with this is create, uh, like at, at minimum a two-year plan to try to get this done. So it's clear to you all, uh, and the public that, um, that, you know, obviously there could be some factors that impact us negatively next year. Uh, but we want to look at multi-year planning for these larger initiatives, uh, to make them affordable, to make them sustainable. Uh, the last thing we want to do is we, we're feeling, hey, we got some state aid this year. Then we go too far out and then we have to pull back. That's always the last thing we want to do. So we want to go cautious with this, but these are improvements we're looking at doing over the next, uh, two to three years. Um, so we're working on finalizing, uh, you know, what we can afford and we'll be more exact about that at the next two meetings really. Um, and then we want to provide a lot more background, uh, data in terms of, um, the budget itself. Uh, like I mentioned, we're looking at a couple of districts that, uh, do a really comprehensive job with this. We're trying to emulate some of their strategies. Some are as simple as, uh, you know, like where does your tax dollar go to? And it breaks down like a dollar in terms of percentages of where all of our budget money goes to in the district. Um, like the, the amount that goes towards staffing and our, our people, um, and everything else in a budget. Also breaking down how much goes towards instruction, things like that. Um, so we're working on that. That will be in the next couple of meetings. Um, but just to go back, um, we did want to spend a lot of time on this tonight. I think we should continue to spend a lot of time, uh, on, on this part, just because it is, um, different this year. Um, you know, we talked about it with the capital project, but I, I don't at all want to, want to be sort of, um, trying to be seen as going quickly through this. This is the most important part here, uh, in terms of people understanding. Any other questions for now or things that you want to see, uh, you know, in the, in a future presentation? Um, cause it only helps us, uh, like breakdowns, backgrounds.
I think I have to digest it a little more, but I, I'll definitely, you know, some thoughts.
And I'll send, uh, I'll send an email out, uh, to the board just with like, if, if there's specific items you want, you know, numbers on or background or the staffing or what have you, just let us know because we want to pull that together. If you have the question, the public probably does too. Uh, what we do in a later meeting is we do get into the communication part. We won't get into that today, but we'll be working on a number of different ways to communicate this with the public, um, so folks understand.
Matt, um, could you put up the enrollment, uh, one just for a sec? So when I looked at that, I see an incoming, I'm just thinking, looking at, uh, transitions here. So you've got in fifth grade, one sixty seven in fifth, eighth grade, two oh six. So that's a, you're, you see, you're, you're, you're losing a two oh six eighth grade, but you're bringing in a one sixty seven. So it's forty students, which is quite a bit, you know? Um, I'm wondering-
And then we have the fourth grade group, which is smaller.
Correct, so in two years, roundabout numbers, if unless there's move-ins are going to, because you've got a seventh at one ninety-two. So you've got some potential here for some things here. And I know if you're looking at, you know, with teams and nine period days and such, um, just wondering, is there any way that any s- staff could be reallocated, a sixth grade teacher if needed, uh, could be at the elementary level, if in A I S or something along those lines to, you know, just based on numbers because, you know, a drop of forty is a pretty big number loss at the middle school.
Do you see like an increase from pri- the private schools though, when they kind of go into sixth grade? I mean, is that part of that?
Yeah, there is a little bit of that. I don't, I, I, I could get a bigger breakdown on where the fifth and fourth graders are going and we could maybe make some predictions off that. I do know homeschooling numbers went up those two years as well.
So it might be more-
We typically don't get, um, I mean, I, I hate sort of making these generalizations, but we don't always get those kids back as high as we do maybe some of the private schools.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we'll maybe gain a few, but not enough to bring it back to two hundred for sure.
Your, um, your content courses, you're not going to have a lot of play with the contents because you've got, you know, two teams and the number of teachers you have is what you have. Um, your play is probably with your, um, your, your, um, specials, but we're now looking into a nine period, which could add, we're thinking of adding. But it, it might not be as drastic because of the lesser students. That's just my thinking, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't have the exact numbers and, you know, all the specials that are run and so on and so forth, but-
Right.
It just could be something there.
Yeah.
We heard more about the downstate development though. I mean, that proposed, that, the numbers that were proposed around that, I think we're estimating six hundred students. That would be-
I think maybe even more, but they're, they're having, I actually-
That's like ten years away.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's ten, but it's- Well, it, it could be shorter or it could be longer, but it's, it's definitely not, you know, in the next couple of years, I don't think.
Yeah, I was just, it just, fourth and fifth just jumped out at me as such, just they're smaller.
Yeah.
And it could give us some options.
Could even, it could even be a smaller innovation, like, uh, a, a little bit more reading support with a teacher or two.
Yep.
You know?
Yeah, it, it does bring benefits, I agree.
Cause you know, one of the things I wanted to, I, you know, I, I, I love to dream, uh, but I, I'm also a realist. So I, I would really love to, uh, put like a multi-year budget plan in front of you all by the end of this. And, and we, you know, obviously the, our funding revenue can change and the state can change like in a year or two. Uh, but that's out of our control, but I, I'd like to make some of the things we want into a sort of a multi-tier thing. Cause the nine period day ultimately, uh, with the numbers going back up, um, isn't cheap at the, at, at roundabout. And so, but, so if we do it, we want to make sure it could last, um, you know, and, and be sustainable. But- But, so.
Okay.
Uh, one of the things I, years ago, did, we had in a prior district was the board would just get regular, um, uh, the board would just get regular like demographic reports, um, from our student information office. So for next year, I wanna just sort of make sure that's part of our regular practice. Um, they would do it once a month, we might do it once a quarter, but just like, so you're just seeing the numbers all the time. Um, and you can see them at the elementary even with classes and that kind of stuff too.
Great.
I, I mean, our hope with the pre-K is that also, uh, connects more people to the district and helps bring our numbers up. That kindergarten number is higher, um, you know, than the previous couple of years. So our hope or goal is pre-K helps bring people into the district too.
All right, thank you. No more questions or comments from anybody?
Okay.
Thank you. All right. It is. So it's time to hear from our student rep, Kiana, who are representing tonight.
Hi, um. Excuse me, sorry. I don't really have anything to comment on. Um, I did remember though, I did, um, finally officially open up the store in the Beacon High School. In case students need like clothing or shoes, they can go in there and grab whatever they need. It's all free, so, yeah.
It's amazing.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Where is it?
It's, um, in the old security office, like kinda right by the cafeteria.
Okay.
And you said it's clothes and shoes and stuff?
Yeah.
And can people donate?
I was gonna say, okay, cause I have a lot of stuff.
Do we just donate like to the main office or?
Yeah, and probably just to the kiosk, like, uh, put my name on it maybe, and they'll just like call me down and I'll grab it.
That's incredible.
Have four years of spikes that have barely been coming your way.
Well, what kind of stuff do you want? Do you want new or Meredith's old stuff?
What are, what are high demand?
Probably like new or gently used.
Gently used too.
Yeah.
Okay.
And how do you get the, do you get the word out through the students, bringing them in? Or how do you, how do you, how have you been getting things into?
Well, they, um, the seniors last year in the, I believe it was Students for Gender Equality, they started the club under that club pretty much, and they were the ones who had everything, like they brought it in. They like sent out like the, the information to donate things. So I've just been working with whatever I already had.
Okay.
So that's how I already had stuff, but students, like my friends for example, have been bringing in things, just leaving it at the kiosk and I'll let it go grab it whenever I'm free.
Okay.
Sounds like an update for the Bulldog Bulletin.
Yeah, no, I, we can help put the word out too.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, reviewing the agenda, there is, um, one change tonight, just a small switch of the minutes from the last board meeting, they were updated, um, to reflect the correct minutes. Um, and so that's all we have on the agenda. So can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? To move, move by Meredith's second. Second, second by Kristen, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes, the board will return in about thirty minutes, does that sound right, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Matt, do you want to do your report?
Yeah. Just, just a couple of quick things. One, I, last week was just kind of one of those incredible weeks where we had, you know, both of our basketball teams in the playoffs. We had two nights of music in our schools. Forest still had the Family Resource Night, which our other elementary schools are doing, but they had theirs last week. We had, we were able to bring the Martin Luther King Bright Star Theater presentation to the theater Friday night. We had the middle school band march in the Parade of Green on Saturday. It was just like a really cool week where I personally had, you know, stuff to see in the district every single night, but it was just cool to see the engagement level be so high and just the number of people at events supporting our students. Just really incredible. And so, you know, one, I could comment on all of it. One little thing I'll note, at the second Music in Our Schools night, the instrumental night, I was doing a little reflecting. It, you know, it was a packed concert. It was a little bit past two hours, which was hard for people, little kids. However, my reflection was my first year here, eight years ago, the concert was a lot shorter, partially because there wasn't a lot of groups. And the jazz band at the time, I think, had maybe three kids in it, and the teachers played with the kids. And this year, we have like the middle school jazz band, we have the high school jazz band. The high school jazz band has 20 plus kids in it. Then we also have like, I think, three different jazz ensembles? And that's just jazz? So it's just like the growth in that, I think, is emblematic of like some of the growth in, in all the things we're doing. And it was just really cool to take a minute to think about that. And then just, we have one cool thing happening this week. We have the book bash Thursday, kind of like five to six thirty. And that's a really cool event geared towards elementary kids, but at Roundabout. I highly suggest going. And then just the business thing I wanted to update you on is I did share a calendar, not to vote on tonight, but in my update, it's just, you know, it's, there's nothing too unique about this calendar. I'll be brief. We don't normally do two weeks of a winter break. The holidays of winter break are on Thursday. And I don't have an exact percentage. There's a handful of districts that are trying to go to school on Monday and Tuesday before Christmas Eve. Most districts are doing the two weeks. To me, it just made sense to do that this one time. I typically am not a two-week winter break person. It doesn't leave us a ton of flexibility on the spring side of the calendar. So we do have like an additional sort of day off, the Friday before Memorial Day, but that's about it. So, you know, I'm gonna hope, I can't just hope, I need to prepare too, but hope that we don't need like a ton of snow days next year, and then I'll have to scramble a little bit. But what I'd like to do is just share this draft out with the community this week in an email update, and then we vote on it at the next meeting. But essentially, we are lucky, our teachers do come back before Labor Day. That gives us some wiggle room. And we'll continue to have like Eid is a day off. Lunar New Year is a state, is now a state holiday. Eid is specific to Beacon right now. So it's, it's pretty standard. Because of winter break, not a lot of flexibility or ability to be creative with it. But I just wanted to speak to that. And then this year's calendar, today's, how warm did it get? Like seventy? Was it seventy? So it makes me think about returning unused snow days, right? When it starts getting warm like this. So I just wanted to share this because, and I do share this with the community, I don't make snow day returns official until probably the beginning of April, because one never knows. But we are a little different. Our teacher contract is not a straight day-for-day ratio, like a lot of districts. So, you know, if, so we have five days built in to our calendar. If we, if I use one snow day, there's two days returned, like two, two days, two, we call them give-back days. So there's two extra days off added to the calendar, not four. Okay? So if there, if I do two snow days, three snow days, or four snow days, only one day is returned as a give-back, as a day off. So it's not a straight, you know, one-to-one kind of thing. It's a little confusing. I think it's been in there for a long time. And so, so based on that calculation, if we don't have any more snow days, we'd be adding two more days off to our current calendar. I probably would make that official at the beginning of April, but I'll start kind of hinting that that's so people can prepare. And that would be a day added on to spring break, so the Tuesday, because we already have that Monday off. It would be that Tuesday, and it'd be a day added on to Memorial Weekend as well, that Tuesday too. So I'll start telling parents this is coming, so they can prepare, and then we make it official when it really feels like we have consistent seventy-degree days. So that's just a little calendar update. If you have any questions or feedback about the calendar, just let me know. With next year's calendar, I feel like the only thing I could really change would be where that extra spring day off goes. We put it before Memorial Weekend, just because we like to spread out the days off. Like the other place to put it would be the Monday after Easter, Sunday, right? Like, so I looked at other districts, it's about fifty-fifty whether districts are doing that day or not. If I don't use all the snow days next year, that would be the first day we would, you know, give back, so to speak. So that's my calendar spiel. Let me know if you have any questions about that stuff.
Okay. And that's it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We will move on to board comments and committee reports, starting with Semra.
Thanks for the reporting on the budget. That was helpful. Looking forward to the presentation on Thursday. And the April eighth play at South Avenue will be exciting for me to watch. So excited about a lot of the programming that the kids are doing.
Nice. That's it? Thanks. All right. Krista?
Yeah, thank you so much for the facilities. A great presentation. Brings back memories of being on the committee. And thank you for the budget presentation. Also, just want to echo what Matt said about the music in our schools. I attended the instrumental night, and that was a similar, similar point of reflection for me as well. Like walking out of there, I kind of was blown away by the level of performance and the number of kids participating, and just the enthusiasm and the community that's really been built around it. So it was very, it was, it was really like, it felt like a, like a milestone. It was very big. And nothing to, I don't have an audit.
We are back. Matt, do you want to do your report?
Yeah. Just, just a couple of quick things. One, I, last week was just kind of one of those incredible weeks where we had, you know, both of our basketball teams in the playoffs. We had two nights of music in our schools. Forest still had the Family Resource Night, which our other elementary schools are doing, but they had theirs last week. We had, we were able to bring the Martin Luther King Bright Star Theater presentation to the theater Friday night. We had the middle school band march in the Parade of Green on Saturday. It was just like a really cool week where I personally had, you know, stuff to see in the district every single night, but it was just cool to see the engagement level be so high and just the number of people at events supporting our students. Just really incredible. And so, you know, one, I could comment on all of it. One little thing I'll note, at the second Music in Our Schools night, the instrumental night, I was doing a little reflecting. It, you know, it was a packed concert. It was a little bit past two hours, which was hard for people, little kids. However, my reflection was my first year here, eight years ago, the concert was a lot shorter, partially because there wasn't a lot of groups. And the jazz band at the time, I think, had maybe three kids in it, and the teachers played with the kids. And this year, we have like the middle school jazz band, we have the high school jazz band. The high school jazz band has 20-plus kids in it. Then we also have like, I think, three different jazz ensembles? And that's just jazz? So it's just like the growth in that, I think, is emblematic of like some of the growth in, in all the things we're doing. And it was just really cool to take a minute to think about that. And then just, we have one cool thing happening this week. We have the book bash Thursday, kind of like five to six thirty. And that's a really cool event geared towards elementary kids, but at roundabout. I highly suggest going. And then just the business thing I wanted to update you on is I did share a calendar, not to vote on tonight, but in my update, it's just, you know, it's, there's nothing too unique about this calendar. I'll be brief. We don't normally do two weeks of a winter break. The holidays of winter break are on Thursday, and I don't have an exact percentage. There's a handful of districts that are trying to go to school on Monday and Tuesday before Christmas Eve. Most districts are doing the two weeks. To me, it just made sense to do that this one time. I typically am not a two-week winter break person. It doesn't leave us a ton of flexibility on the spring side of the calendar. So we do have like an additional sort of day off the Friday before Memorial Day, but that's about it. So, you know, I'm gonna hope. I can't just hope, I need to prepare too. But hope that we don't need like a ton of snow days next year, and then I'll have to scramble a little bit. But what I'd like to do is just share this draft out with the community this week in an email update, and then we vote on it at the next meeting. But essentially, we, we are lucky. Our teachers do come back before Labor Day. That gives us some wiggle room. And we'll continue to have like Eid as a day off. Lunar New Year is a state, is now a state holiday. Eid is specific to Beacon right now. So it's, it's pretty standard. Because of winter break, not a lot of flexibility or ability to be creative with it. But I just wanted to speak to that. And then this year's calendar, today's, how warm did it get? Like seventy? Was it seventy? So it makes me think about returning unused snow days, right? When it starts getting warm like this. So I just wanted to share this because, and I do share this with the community. I, I don't make snow day returns official until probably the beginning of April, because one never knows. But we are a little different. Our teacher contract is not a straight day-for-day ratio, like a lot of districts. So, you know, if, so we have five days built in to our calendar. If we, if I use one snow day, there's two days returned, like two, two days, two, we call them give-back days. So there's two extra days off added to the calendar, not four. Okay? So if there, if I do two snow days, three snow days, or four snow days, only one day is returned as a give-back, as a day off. So it's not a straight, you know, one-to-one kind of thing. It's a little confusing. I, I think it's been in there for a long time. And so, so based on that calculation, if we don't have any more snow days, we'd be adding two more days off to our current calendar. I probably would make that official at the beginning of April, but I'll start kind of hinting that that's so people can prepare. And that would be a day added on to spring break, so the Tuesday, because we already have that Monday off. It would be that Tuesday, and it'd be a day added on to Memorial Weekend as well, that Tuesday too. So I'll start telling parents this is coming so they can prepare, and then we make it official when it really feels like we have consistent seventy-degree days. So that's just a little calendar update. If you have any questions or feedback about the calendar, just let me know. With next year's calendar, I feel like the only thing I could really change would be where that extra spring day off goes. We put it before Memorial Weekend just because we like to spread out the days off. Like the other place to put it would be the Monday after Easter, Sunday, right? Like, so I looked at other districts. It's about fifty-fifty whether districts are doing that day or not. If I don't use all the snow days next year, that would be the first day we would, you know, give back, so to speak. So that's my calendar spiel. Let me know if you have any questions about that stuff.
Okay. And that's it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We will move on to board comments and committee reports, starting with Semra.
Thanks for the reporting on the budget. That was helpful. Looking forward to the presentation on Thursday. And the April eighth play at South Avenue will be exciting for me to watch. So excited about a lot of the programming that the kids are doing.
Nice. That's it? All right. Krista?
Yeah, thank you so much for the facilities. A great presentation. Brings back memories of being on the committee. And thank you for the budget presentation. Also, just want to echo what Matt said about the music in our schools. I attended the instrumental night, and that was a similar, similar point of reflection for me as well. Like walking out of there, I kind of was blown away by the level of performance and the number of kids participating and just the enthusiasm and the community that's really been built around it. So it was very, it was, it was really like, it felt like a, like a milestone. It was very big. And nothing to worry. I don't have an audit committee date. Yeah.
We can...
Want to do it now? Or do you want to?
We can do it over text, too. Okay.
Yep, and that's it. Okay, great. Chris?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
All righty. Levon?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay. Eric?
Just, uh, Facilities Committee, twenty-fourth. We're meeting the twenty-fourth at six o'clock. Be our next meeting. That's all I have.
All right. Anthony?
No comments.
Okay. Meredith?
We have a policy meeting on Monday from today at seven. And that's great to hear about the concerts. I'm sorry I missed them. But as someone who has a child that started playing trombone here and now is studying in college, I, I feel like the music department has grown a lot here and gives a lot. It's great to hear.
Did we decide to have Proll before policy?
We did, although, well, we sort of did, but then, I don't know. In everything we've talked about, I feel like it's more of a district communication issue and that they don't necessarily need us for it.
So we, okay, so we don't really need a meeting right now?
I mean, we could talk about it. It's up to you. But I, I don't feel like we have anything. We have the retreat on Thursday, and we can talk about...
Yeah, I don't know if there are any website updates really right now or anything like that. So, okay. That is fine by me. All right, was that it?
Yes.
Okay. I also wanted to echo that the Music in Our Schools performance was great. Both of my sons are in, in band. My older son is deeply committed to band, and it's given him a great, I don't know, it just, it gives him a sense of pride and effort and, you know, put toward this, this art. And I love watching them grow. Like I've seen them on that stage from when they were little until now. They're both in middle school, and it's just a really cool experience. I also wanted to ask ju- just one more time, since we're all in person, if anybody can make the Bosie's Campus Tour. There's one tomorrow. There's one on the twenty-fifth. If nobody can, it's no big deal, but I told her I would ask during the meeting.
During the day, right?
Yeah. That's which is why I can't make it.
I just can't do it.
Okay. That's not a problem. She said she would let us know when they have more tours, if, if nobody could make it. I also just wanted to nudge everyone to complete the, the board eval. It's due, well, the deadline has been set for March twenty-first. It's a really good opportunity, especially, you know, when you're, when you're learning, which, I mean, honestly, we're all still learning how to be good board members, but it's like a good way to sort of gather your thoughts and, and articulate, you know, what you think is working and what isn't. And so I would urge everyone to, to do it so we can really have a, a complete picture in our minds of, of how we're working, how we're not working. And that is all from me for tonight, so we can move on to the Bosie's nominations. So we have, I think there are three, there are three positions open on the Duchess Bosie's Board. And there are four people that are candidates for the roles. So there's two incumbents, Ralph Chumento, he has been serving as the board president, Gully Stanford, who has been serving as the vice president of that board, Mark Fleishower, Fleishower, who came in tonight and spoke, and then Bryce Holland, who would also be a new addition to the board. So do we have any nominations for any of these candidates?
I'd like to nominate Gully Stanford.
Okay, great. I will nominate Mark. Will anybody, does anybody want to do a third nomination for the third seat?
I'll nominate Holland.
Holland? Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay. All right. So can I get a, so how do we, I forget every year, do I ask for a motion to approve each nomination? Okay, great. So can I get a motion to approve the nomination for Gully Stanford?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I get a motion to nominate Mark Fleishower?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
By Meredith. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Can I get a motion to nominate Bryce Holland?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So that's everybody. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. "The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue." Are there any items that any Board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I have two. Twelve point oh eight H twelve.
Okay.
And twelve point one zero J sixteen.
Okay, great. So can I have a motion to approve ten point oh one through fifteen point oh two minus twelve point oh eight H twelve and twelve point one oh J sixteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Comments or questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes. And then we, can I get a motion for twelve point oh eight H twelve?
So moved.
Second.
Kristin, second by. Anthony, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, passes. All right, can I get a motion for twelve point one oh J sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
Anthony, second by Kristin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Abstain.
Abstaining, okay, passes. All right, can I get a motion to during the meeting?
So moved, moved.
Second, second by.
We're gonna be considered.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.